Call to order the City of Portage Planning Commission meeting for today, Monday, August 4th. If you would stand and say the pledge. Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Here.
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 If everybody's had an opportunity to look at the minutes, if there are no additions or corrections, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Could you call our first order of new business?
First order of new business, public hearing, amending P-02-24 RCJJ Development, care of Chris Salatus. And for the board's edification before we get going, just to be clear, we have a relocation of the parking lot, and this is at the, I mean, excuse me, the ingress and egress. The, this is at the request of Indot, not the petitioner. Indot is the one managing the ingress and egress off of Route 6 where they would prefer it to be, and this is an Indot decision. That's why the petitioner comes back tonight. All the other approvals are still intact. This is a, almost a ministerial act to go ahead and change and comply with where Indot would prefer the ingress and egress be off of Route 6. Thanks.
Adding one lot.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. I couldn't have said it any better than Attorney McClure. So Indot has requested that we realign Debbie Street with, I believe the north side is Debbie Lane, to make a more uniform intersection. So we have, we're showing the subdivisions as such. The sewer and water will remain on the east side where it was originally planned. We've received a variance from the sanitary board to allow for that. Subsequently, stop signs have been moved and relocated and added based on that relocation. Everything else will be consistent in that area. And then we've added one, or requesting to add one additional lot at the southeast corner. It's labeled here as Lot 154. That complies with all the subdivision control standards for this subdivision and for the city of Portage's codes. Those are the two changes.
That completes your presentation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? Okay, I, okay, you may come up to the podium. I need you to come to the podium and give your name and your address. It's for the public record.
You need me to sign this? If you could scroll back down to the other end of the property, the south end. Is that the cul-de-sac at the end of 712 West?
Okay, I'll make notes of our questions and then we will have them answered for you.
Pardon me? You can't answer my question?
We will. We'll answer them all together for you, yes.
So what do you want me to do now?
Do you have another question? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner?
I'm Lou T. Rock. I live at 3478 Debbie Lane in Portage. I came prepared to present logic and rational considerations on the project at hand, but I'll set those remarks aside. After due consideration, it occurs to me that this is a done deal, that input from local constituents and community members really do not matter, that this contractor has received all assurances that this project will go forward regardless of the detrimental effects, that this public hearing is just a perfunctory bump in the road that must be tolerated to satisfy procedures. It was only required due to the relocation of the Route 6 access to achieve Indot approval. His team will probably descend on the neighborhood, on the neighborhood tomorrow morning. Some heavy equipment is already in place. The residents along 712 West would probably attest to this. There's a Cherry Street in this project. Perhaps there will be a Bonta Street in a future project. Powers greater than public opinion are at work. Logic and public opinion would have addressed the density years ago. This started in 2021. He knew the limitations and rules when he purchased the property, but there have been variance petitions, denials, change of classification from M1 to PD, and denials, and now, a year later, ready to move dirt. The contractor's siren call of development and profit override the voice of reason, logic, and community. This contractor's bottom line is his bottom line. The city will be left holding the bag when he has departed. Representing the taxpayers of a community is a serious thoughtful responsibility for each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? If not, I close the public hearing, and if you could go ahead and answer the gentleman's question.
That is the cul-de-sac at the south end there, as it's shown.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, but this is not where we question back and forth. I will now open to questions from the commission.
I do have a question. So with the additional lot for Lot 154, just for the record, what was the reason for adding this parcel? Looking at the aesthetics of its adjacent parcels, why was it not added in the original plans?
Engineering oversight.
So other than engineering oversight, is there a reason why it's necessary or essential in this plan?
I would say, you know, we're working with the city on a residential TIF. This helps the TIF perform better. This helps maintain, it is a maintenance-free subdivision as all of our BZA variances were, or conditioned under. This helps maintain that maintenance-free subdivision and keeps the HOA performing better.
Thank you.
Tom, I did not get the covenants, and Brent didn't either. No, that wasn't, we haven't seen what, what is written. We made a variance for the covenants, but we have not seen them.
Those were required to be provided upon primary flats, so they have been provided to the city and were approved.
I didn't get them and Brent didn't get them. He's younger and...
Correct.
Yeah, those are, those will follow, yeah.
I do.
You by chance know which one it is, community duration lack covenant and general maintenance by?
Yeah, well, the, we can, you know, we're doing some, um, there's, uh, still, uh, we, uh, in the, in the, in the, uh, in the, uh, in the, uh, in the, uh, in the, uh,
So we have them, that's, uh, that's, uh, we don't have, and, and, um, we're the third, the third party.
I don't really think it's great. That is the covenants. That's how we, we, uh, 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 we, uh,
Yeah, the covenants have already been approved and were signed off by the city as meeting all the standards.
I know, but we're, we're missing, and you're asking for something else, and we're checking that. So in there was supposed to be, the property was managed by a third-party management company, and they accepted that.
I'd have to review the minutes. It's really, I wasn't ready for that, but you just, uh, so, I'd have to go back to the BZA minutes to review it.
I mean, it's a condition of the BZA. Again, we incorporated what we could into the Bs, into the covenants of the, of the HOA, but I don't know how we write into the covenants that it's going to be managed by a third-party entity.
I'd have to go back and listen to the minutes. I don't, I don't remember reading well enough to pull it up.
I, 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 I don't remember the name of the motion, because I was showing you guys, and I, I said, when you guys agreed these terms, then no fences allowed in the next meeting, we went ahead and you guys showed, you know, you had fences and how it looked out well, but just, I didn't, I didn't, when you made the motion to not have...
Sorry. But when I made those motions and add those things in, I think you kind of remember some of them. I did that because I know a lot of HOAs will run into problems when they're ran by the people, the community itself, instead of having a third-party be in charge of like lawn care, snow removal, things like that. Or I can't remember what month that was from exactly, because it came through once and then went through twice.
You still have to have a board of directors. You can't just have a third-party running the.
Well, that's what I meant. You still have to have the board, but like somebody at management that manages it to know what they're doing, is like what was in there, like a First American, or Rose, or whoever they want, but sometimes you get into power trip situations and stuff.
No, that was 2024. That was the winter.
It was like November, December, because there's three people the first time that I did it, and so then it got pushed to the following month. So it could have been October or November that approved, or November, December that approved.
Tom, I have another question. With the contingencies that we have, they cannot do anything on the property until they are all signed off by the state?
No, they're allowed to do, they're allowed to do certain things as far as putting the SWIP silt fence up and clearing that perimeter out for the silt fence. There's certain things that they're allowed to do.
Do we have a list of what?
Uh, yes.
That's why I threw that in there. Sorry.
Covenants have already been approved by the plan.
This, we're, we want to add this. We want to add this as an additional. It was supposed to be in there.
We can hold to what we've done, but this isn't a meaning to add.
Are you talking about adding a contingency, or what are you looking to add?
They're in there, and I didn't get them. Brett said he never saw them, that the covenants were supposed to have, that the HOA was supposed to be ran by a third independent party.
Which I said they could have the whole board.
Or like, sorry.
They still need a board.
Um, they would still have a board of the property owners itself, but we wanted like the snow and lawn care to be managed by a third-party company, preferably. Okay.
Second.
Second. I now call the meeting back in order.
So the minutes of the August twenty twenty-four, August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four BZA meeting were reviewed. The motion was contingent upon maintenance managed by a third-party company, ensuring the subdivision remains maintenance-free, including snow and lawn care, and allowing fences as part of the HOA's management. And that's the motion that passed three-two.
We have a clause in here that has managing agent. We'll make it a little more strict that says the HOA shall have a um engage in a declarant or third-party management company. It's already in there. Language is already in there. We'll just tighten it up a little more stringent.
See, and I think the idea was because where Brent bought, the owner continued to do the maintenance and pay himself five times what it was worth. So that's why the third management company in that discussion came up.
Yeah.
So, Scott, does that cover an independent person, or?
If he makes the change from may into shall in that one paragraph, it changes it. Because right now they were able to outsource. The HOA board itself was able to outsource to a managed party that just forces them to outsource to a managed party. I think the problem BZA was attempting to solve, it's gotten a little bit more focused now. It's not that the developer remained control of the HOA and overcharged everyone. It was that the HOA board took over. And in that HOA board, somewhere in that voting, they voted one of the members to do that, which, that's the difference.
So can we have the verbiage that should read, starting right now?
What page are you on?
Fourteen, five point zero seven. Line four.
Fourteen, five zero seven. Line four. Take out in its discretion and add shall.
And then what does the rest of it say?
You want just that section or the section involving maintenance?
Well, I'm, I, well, and maybe, can I take a picture of it?
You can just have the whole thing.
Okay.
Page fourteen, section five point zero seven, line four.
Okay, so it says entity affiliated with declarant.
Yes, they're going to declare that first American number. So like an example like that, third-party company.
And Scott, that's exactly what it says?
What you're reading?
What? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else want to see this?
Other questions from the commission?
Would it be um prudent for us to have that revision submitted by a particular due date to ensure that the change was made?
Or discretion.
Are we basically done with this part since we got it figured out now?
No.
Okay.
That's fine. We'll have it done before September first, for sure. We'll have it done within two weeks, but September first is great.
So just base, taking one account first, on the lot, I make a motion not to include the extra lot.
Second that motion?
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
I would like to know on what standards of the subdivision control act are we not following that requires it?
Because it wasn't in your original plan, and we approved the original plan.
Well, the third party will cut it, and since the BZA heard the plan, and the BZA approved the original plan without the extra lot, and that's what we are presenting, our facts of whether or not to move forward on that without the lot, they were satisfied with the approval by the BZA, they should be satisfied now to continue to move forward without the lot.
What's the history of the lot? It just wasn't on the plat? It wasn't part of the plan?
It was just not on the plat. Our engineers failed to draw the line on the south side. There was one version that we submitted, and Dana caught it after we had made a public hearing to the Plan Commission that included it, but because our submission to the Plan Commission at the time already did not include the extra lot and that the public hearing notices has gone out, we removed it, so we did not have to redo a public hearing at that time. And now that we're going through a public hearing now for an amendment because of the road, uh, we decided to include it. But we had discussed with the city, I believe, at one point on making a plat amendment for the extra lot in the future. Because it meets the subdivision control ordinance and the conditions of the BZA approval.
We're just gonna, the board's motion is second. We would just like that kind of no man's land for now?
Wait, hold on a minute. Motion's been made with the second.
That's what I mean.
Right.
And the option would be, it would be in no man's land.
Right.
And that's, okay.
Mr. Cherry, could you call roll? Sorry. Could you call for the vote? I'm sorry, not roll.
Melissa Widenbach?
I vote for no man's land.
Brent Wright?
Nay.
If you're voting not to include the lot, then you're voting in the affirmative yes. And if you're against it, it would be no. Okay, just to make clear, you, it's just the way you questioned it.
Is this how, yes?
Just how you questioned it, so I'm just making it clear for the record. A yes means you agree to the motion. No means no.
No.
Carissa Childers?
Yes.
Sam LaBoy?
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez?
Yes.
Now we need a motion for...
Alonzo Garcia, I apologize.
I am so sorry, Alonzo.
It's okay. Yes.
So now we need a motion for, for the, of the, of the contingencies and the correction to the minutes, or to the comments.
I make a motion to approve the primary plat of Sandy Trails to relook at the entrance back to its original location with the contingencies of the updated covenants by September first submitted, the developer to provide the copy of the Indiana Department of Transportation approval letter for the subdivision entrance onto US Highway six, and a copy of the IDEM letter of the approval, and to acknowledge the list provided to the developer regarding the listed trees and different species of trees prepared by the professional forester dated uh July twenty seventeen to be utilized by the developer when selecting trees to plant within the subdivision. Those are the three contingencies.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Melissa Widenbach?
No.
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Carissa Childers?
Yes.
Sam LaBoy?
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez?
Yes.
Alonzo Garcia?
Yes.
If I could get a copy of the findings and facts when they're completed, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Cherry, could you call our next order of business?
SP dash 05 dash 25 San J H 9 LLC care of Kevin Coros with McMahon Associates.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? Kevin Coros, McMahon Associates, 952 South State Road 2, Valparaiso, Indiana, here with Maxing, owner and developer of the property. I'm going to attempt to be technologically advanced here to varying degrees of completeness. Was computer turned off during that time? Am I using the right one? I know, that's... There we go. Almost like I knew what I was doing. All right. Again, good afternoon. As you guys have, most of you have been well involved with property at 6264 Melton Road at the northeast corner of Indiana Highway 249 and Melton Road slash US 20 existing. There is a Marathon gas station that has been in pretty severe disrepair for quite some time. Mr. Singh has purchased the property and as such wants to develop it to something that is more appropriate to what we consider the gateway of portage. We have been through multiple steps with you guys, as you know, so we started this project back in 2023. In January, the BZA saw us for some immediate zone requests that were necessary due to our conversations with INDOT. Once again, kind of, so to speak, barring us from doing improvements that we would have preferred to do to the entrances of the site. At that time, we met with the planning department, got initial blessing from them that we could do this while keeping the existing entrances as they are, went through BZA to get the verification done there. That was January 27th there of this year. Beginning of June, we met with the planning department for our DRC meetings, went through a few rounds of comments of which was the sanitary improvements on the property, which started in one direction and turned into a city project. Mr. Garcia is familiar with that, so we are working with them on that part and have provided the city data that they need in order to build the main that we will be utilizing to tie this building into along Armstrong Street. That was taken to the sanitary board July 8th this year and approved. We were just back at the BZA July 28th for two final approvals of things that didn't get caught the first round, that being signs on the site. There are two, portage ordinance allows one, we have approval for two, and the other one being something that I all of a sudden just forgot. Deana, can you remember? The, what was it? The other BZA approval that we just got? Oh, that's right. Thank you. We do have a utility easement through the north portion of the site. Your ordinance doesn't allow for impervious surface to be built upon in easements. There is some history with there. We're currently working with INDOT to finalize that and get overhead utilities underground and hopefully in the appropriate space this time. So that being said, we finalized some final comments that Deana had and we got those back to her today. Sorry for the short notice. One of which was the widening of the sidewalk along the frontage of the building to include that to be six foot and the other was the photometric plan, which I understand is probably going to be contingent upon approval for tonight's approval, should we get there. So that being said, I know most of you are familiar with the site. We're happy to answer any questions you have and in terms of trying to speed things along, we'll move it over to you guys to ask any questions.
I'll open for questions from the commission.
So you mentioned that we had those information from, as of today, I haven't seen any kind of survey or point or anything.
Okay, I can get them to you hand and has them, so I am sure he was.
Yeah, if you could get them to me.
No problem.
I'm sure you did get them to him, but they never made it to us, so.
I understand how that goes. I will email them to you directly.
Yep, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
No problem. And just to be clear too, and just so you know, there are two boundary surveys as well as all of our engineering data, so you'll have the whole kit and caboodle with it.
Questions?
Quick question. I see things in here about existing concrete drives and all that. Will there be updates to the curving and all the surrounding areas? Because that's pretty bad over there.
I will say yes with an asterisk. So as I mentioned, we have tried and failed miserably to work with INDOT on this. I think everybody in this room would have preferred a little bit of a different layout on these drive situations. INDOT had come back stating that they were absolutely, not only not willing to work with us, but wanting to take away every single entrance on the site. So, no in those senses, but yes in the terms that we are going to be updating everything along Armstrong Street to current city standards, but unfortunately, that will end at the right-of-way limits there and no improvements will be done along the frontage of the property, the main drives, due to INDOT's involvement. And that was what our first BZA on January 28th went that we went to the BZA right away because we knew if we didn't get those variances, the site likely wouldn't be able to be developed due to INDOT's wish to remove everything.
And just to point out, Armstrong is on the right-hand side of the property.
Correct.
Is that grass in between the proposed gas station and the sidewalk that's off of Armstrong?
It is.
It's a lot of grass.
It's a lot of grass. You're welcome. Yeah, you guys don't get to see that very often, I understand. There, this, obviously, as you guys know, this property is very unique property in the sense that we have three right-of-ways bounding the lines and not only that, we're affected by extensive setback lines due to overlay districts and city standards. So there was a very, very limited envelope in which this site could work and I think everybody agrees that anything is better than what's there now.
Do you have any plans? I drive an automobile that has, it runs on gas. Are you trying to do any sort of like charging stations for electric vehicles?
Yeah, on the north side, we're gonna put like probably three or four charging station. I did talk to GM company and GF Petroleum is on board. They're gonna, they're gonna get the charging station for me.
Great, thank you.
Along those lines, would this also have stations for E85 fuel as well?
Yeah, we're gonna have E85, A15, whatever the blend I can get. I think I ordered six kind of gas on each dispenser so they can, like people don't have to go here, there. So I mean like, I try to get all the options in, you know, as a business wise, since like I'm spending so much money and so I have to recoup somehow.
It's a great location. I do want to ask if you're planning on running this 24/7?
We are already 24/7 and we are planning to do 24/7.
Also with your convenience store, are you also offering like a hot case as well, or is it just strictly food item perishables? Dry goods?
Yeah, there is a California-based Mountain Mike pizza. I'm trying to bring them in northwest Indiana and then, you know, chicken or cold cut sandwiches or some, you know, like grab to go. So that's what I'm thinking right now.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was trying to bring up the architecturals for you, but. I can only do so much technology wise.
Yeah, probably somewhere.
There's the rear of the building.
Also in your design plan, and it's hard for me to see here, what, how many security cameras may you have since it's in 24 hour?
35 to 40.
25 to 40?
35 to 40.
35 to 40 security cameras?
It's a big building. It's 50, oh, 5,045, correct. Yeah, it's a pretty big building.
Okay.
That north end needs a facelift, so I think that's gonna look nice.
Will the hot food be 24 hours as well?
No, we can put microwave in.
It'd be nice to have pizza 24 hours.
Yeah, so.
As well add a soft serve.
Do we have to add also contingency about the sidewalk and the survey to the engineer?
The sidewalk is updated in the latest plans.
Perfect.
That information's like outside of this job, has nothing to do with the site specifically for site plan, it's something else regarding the city putting in utilities. No.
Any other questions?
So I do have another question, and this is just thinking outside the box and I don't see it on the site plan, but just forward thinking, knowing that we have bike trails and we have a lot of connections hopefully coming up through the north end, is it possible in your plans to add a few bike racks perhaps so that there's a safe place for bikers to park while they run in to get their pizza?
Yeah, we can add into it. Just a minor change. I mean, not even change, yeah.
Thank you.
If no more questions, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve SP dash 05 dash 25 with the following contingencies: updated photometric plan provided to and approved by staff for the site, the installation of sanitary lines, water lines to be installed by the city for the partitioner to connect to. Am I allowed to add the bike rack thing? Okay, that's it.
Second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any other questions? Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Melissa Widenbach?
Yes.
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Carissa Childers?
Yes.
Sam La Boy?
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez?
Yes.
Alonzo Garcia?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Make sure to tell him that.
Work on that soft serve.
Mr. Cherry, can you call our next order of business?
SP dash 06 dash 25 Logan Worthrich care of Adam McAlpine, McAlpine Consulting LLC.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Adam McAlpine. McAlpine Consulting LLC, 390 East, 400 North, just gonna fire it up here, in Valparaiso. Here tonight to, hopefully for the final time in front of this board, to get the plan commission approval for a new ladybug laundry. I work for a man named Logan Wheatrick. He owns about a dozen ladybug laundry facilities in central Indiana. The first one was in Francisville. From his father, he took over the company and he's grown it. Now there are, you know, 11 additional and he's looking to continue to grow in Lake Porter and Lepore County. He couldn't be here tonight. The general contractor on this project is ICS. Matt Rossman usually joins me at these meetings, but he's not here this evening. But this project, let me pull up my plans. This project has gone through a handful of stages as we've been working through various approvals through the city. The first step that I told my client was we need to get the project rezoned for this use because it was, the project is located on the northwest corner of Sunrise and Willow Creek, just north of the new Big B Coffee. And that empty lawn parcel just north of this is a credit union. So the project, the property was zoned OC, office commercial, we had to make it zone C1. That has happened. Then the next step is we have to lay out some preliminary layout options, just throwing ideas against the wall to find out what fits with the client's needs and expectations for the property. It's an awkwardly shaped parcel in that there's not a lot of frontage. I call it kind of a panhandle that heads out to the front to Willow Creek. And the client didn't originally want it as far back in the property as it is shown, but this layout that we've arrived at is the best use of the property that does meet with my client's expectations now. And but after we lay out this, the geometry, then you have to look at the city's design standards and find, okay, how do we deviate from the standards and is there no other way around it? And we had to find that list of variances. We found it. We've obtained the approval from the city, from the Board of Zoning Appeals for all of the, all of the variances. That's in the past. I'm here tonight, and then the next step is engineering. Now I'm ready to go because I know what the rules are. And I have worked through various engineering matters related to water, sewer, stormwater runoff, working on various matters related to the drive connection and all of the site geometry and grading that goes along with that, coordinating through your engineering consultant, through your planning staff, back and forth and back and forth. That's kind of the nature of these projects. But we're here tonight. I believe we are at a spot where we're ready to be approved for this project. The construction will likely begin this fall, following this approval, hopefully this evening. My next step would be to go for the construction stormwater permit, which allows the client to break ground and they'll get a contractor to begin, begin the work. Happy to answer any questions that I can answer. I can't answer anything really related to the business since Logan's not here, but excited to be at this step. Takes a while, but any questions you have, I'll be happy to answer. And as before you do, let me just, these are the latest civil engineering drawings. This is the most current landscape plan. And so we exceed standards. We have a site lighting plan. We're not shedding, we're not cascading light onto any neighbors. There are residents to the south and to the west, and these are measured in foot candles. And if you zoom in, you can see that they're, you know, we go to zero at the property limits. So you have wall-mounted lighting and pole-mounted lights. So there's plenty of illumination for the patrons, but nothing is cast out onto the neighbors. So with that, I'll just pause there and answer any questions.
I'll open two questions from the commission. I'll open two questions from the commission.
Mr. Cherry, can you discuss with us issues associated with the water connections that are on this property?
The water connections or sanitary?
Well, you could just talk about both, please.
It's the sanitary and water is what's on the staff report.
Do you want to, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I can speak to it, or the petitioner can speak to it. Doesn't matter. So, Adam, have you by chance have taken a look at and see if that tap coming off of Willow Creek is extending into that property at all?
Yes. So, the concern that was brought up by staff is related to any impacts, traffic impacts to Willow Creek Road as it relates to these plans, because these plans, as they're drawn in front of you, show a sewer connection in the middle of Willow Creek and a water connection on the east side of Willow Creek. I can tell you, so this is a three-inch water service. It's a larger service. It's a lot of use. But that will be drilled below Willow Creek. There will be no interruption for water, to get water from Indiana American Water to the west side of the road. This is the city's sewer atlas, and this 249 is the sewer tap. That means 249 feet from this manhole is where you'll find a west sewer tap. So, this information was provided by the city engineer. And where that falls on the civil plan, let me get there, is about where my cursor is. It's at the southeast end of the parcel. So, it's really not complicated at all to make that connection. You would just install a manhole here and have a, this line which goes east come to the southeast and would tie into that existing tap. So, that's an existing tap for home that used to be here or a business. I don't know. And what that means is there's no interruption for any, any of the utility connections on Willow Creek. We would be a self-contained site.
No, I believe that connection should be exposed and inspected by Portage Utilities so they can confirm that it's usable in there.
Yes.
And I could test through the wireline. It's just going to be bored under Willow Creek. John Hannett's mentioned that they do that all the time. There shouldn't be any issues regarding traffic or interruptions.
So, the commission can either approve contingent upon the proper sanitary tie-in plan approved by staff or continue. It's up to the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan's contingent upon all the issues addressed.
Second.
Can we name the issues to be again, Alonzo?
It will be approval of the sanitary lateral to be inspected by Portage Utilities.
So amended.
Second again?
Yep.
Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Melissa Widenbach.
Yes.
Brent Wright.
Yes.
Carissa Childers.
Yes.
Sam La Boy.
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl.
Yes.
Denise Little.
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez.
Yes.
Alonzo Garcia.
Yes.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, FD-01-25, Lennar Homes of Indiana Incorporated, care of Todd Leith, seeking approval for final development plan for Swanson Trails.
Good evening. My name is Todd Leith. I'm an attorney. I'm representing the petitioner in this matter and the next one. So, I'm going to talk about both of the cases because they are so closely related and tied together. Joining me at the table is Luke Fricki from Lennar, and we have a couple other folks from Lennar here. We also have the design consultant, the engineer from Manhard Consulting. Mike Moore joins us as well. The five of us are going to try and present to you and answer any questions that you might have with regard to this project. But I know that you're very familiar with it. Swanson Trails is a project that came to you at the tail end of 2024 as a rezoning to a PD or PUD with a concept plan that has two housing styles. It's 100% residential with two different housing styles and homes and lot sizes within it. It allowed us to preserve a significant stand of trees, which was most important to the neighbors on the east side of Swanson Road, as you will recall. Through that process, Mayor Bonta became involved, met with the citizens, brought us into a citizen meeting in this very room in a very informal way, and we enlarged the number of trees that we were able to protect and reduced a curb cut out onto Swanson and made some other changes to the concept plan. To say that the concept plan's gone through a bit of revision would be an understatement. I think there are eight concept plans in my electronic file back at the office. So, we came a long way. And you made a favorable recommendation to the city council. The city council adopted a rezoning ordinance in March to adopt the concept plan and the preliminary development plan. So, that brings us to tonight's meeting, and that is to receive approval of the secondary plat and the final development plan. And that's where Manhard Consulting steps in. Everything prior to that was, in the plating process, was certainly a part of their design, but the zoning was not. And so, in the time since June 2nd, there have been some staff reviews. There have been a staff report issued for each of the two petitions before you tonight. I understand there was a pre-construction meeting with the utility department, and we were cleared for construction. Without this approval, we were still able to begin construction with preliminary approval under your rules. We haven't done that, but now we're here asking for secondary approval. And I understand, as I mentioned, that there are a couple staff reports for these two petitions and some contingencies. I think those contingencies are acceptable. One has to do with the landscaping and specifically species of plants. So, we didn't get all of that, as I understood it, not required. But we do have some. But I think the city wants to take another look and make sure that we follow the suggestions of arborists and foresters with regard to plantings. So, with that, we would simply ask your approval of the secondary plat and the final development plan for Swanson Trails. Thank you.
I will now open for questions from the commission. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the final development plan for Swanson Trails' plan development with these contingencies. The final development plan regarding landscaping be reviewed and approved by staff. Approval and recordation of the final development plan at the Porter County Recorder's Office. Document number of recorded off-site easement agreements with national transmission to be noted on the secondary plat. All bonding to be completed according to the City of Portage subdivision control ordinance, Chapter 66, Chapter 90, Article 9. Processes, permits, and fees for the plan development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're doing one at a time. We have a second. Any other questions? Mr. Cherry, can you call roll?
Melissa Widenbach.
No.
Brent Wright.
Yes.
Carissa Childers.
Yes.
Sam La Boy.
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl.
Yes.
Denise Little.
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez.
Yes.
Alonzo Garcia.
Yes.
May we have a motion on S-05-25?
Yeah, let me read it in for the record. S-05-25, Lennar Homes of Indiana Incorporated, care of Todd Leith, seeking secondary plat approval for Swanson Trails.
I make a motion for a secondary plat approval for Swanson Trails.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? If not, wait, Dina?
It's the same with the exception, there's no landscaping requirement. That's all.
It's the same contingencies?
I amend my motion to make a motion to accept the secondary plat approval with the same contingencies except the landscaping.
I need the second again.
Second.
Any, any other questions? If not, Mr. Cherry, could you call roll? Do you have a question?
Melissa Widenbach.
No.
Brent Wright.
Yes.
Carissa Childers.
Yes.
Sam La Boy.
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl.
Yes.
Denise Little.
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez.
Yes.
Alonzo Garcia.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Outstanding. I would like to take a point of personal privilege and thank you all for your time and attention. Earlier this evening, you were attacked for your service to the city. And it's unfortunate that members of the public don't appreciate how hard you work, how seriously you take your job. And I know through this process and all of the other matters that I've handled here, that that's simply not true. Thank you for your time and attention.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
I think we already voted. All those in favor still say.
Aye.
Aye.
Me.